Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting, February the 20th. Gentlemen?
I am.
Mr. Payne? Good evening. February the 20th, 2014. A little call, please.
Natalie President.
All present.
Gavin President.
Dan and President misplaced.
We have a four. Please stand for the invocation and take the lead.
This is great. Well, let me thank you for all of the provisions that you have granted us since the last time we were here. We ask for your continued presence and really attempt to deliver this work. And we ponder, may we keep you in our minds and our hearts. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will recognize our visitors, and we have some presentations. The first one, New Roots Youth Garden. Ladies, gentlemen.
This is on the board. They put this on the board.
Will Tammy introduce the board?
Okay.
I will.
I'm Tammy Holloway, and I'm currently the president of New Roots Youth Organization. We have some of our board members with us tonight. We have Paul Strong and Bill Payne, Christina, can never say Laurie.
Laurie.
Laurie Klingel, Joanne Prince Bichette.
Brooke Thomas.
Did I miss anyone? Oh, Jen Lewis. Is our avid supporter at all times and town representative for us, which is great. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you for coming.
I'll make it quick, but you should have a PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for having us here. We appreciate it. And one of the things that we really wanted to start with by saying is that, you know, it's been an evolution for New Roots, both visually as you see it and when you come in town. But sometimes you forget about kind of where it's come in the short time that it's come. You'll see in the handout, our vision and our mission. And we spent a lot of time last year looking at that. You know, sometimes you kind of get started with something, and you have to take a step back and clarify what you're doing and why you're doing it. And that really gave us some focus this past year to achieve some of our goals. We really had a good time kind of writing the story of a youth garden. I'm not going to read it to you. I did bring some extra copies for people in the audience if you want to see. But some of the things that have evolved over the past three years. And it really began with Laurie Klingel's master's thesis. And to me, that really says it all. You know, one woman with a vision can take us a lot of places. The recipe for success is a lot of supporters and a lot of dedicated people. But we couldn't do any of it without the support of the town in giving us the space to do that and supporting us through that because it takes time to kind of grow as we grow young people. And that support really got us off the ground in the right way. And we want to talk a little bit about kind of what we're all about and what we've done. In your handout, you'll see kind of the original concept of the garden, which I think if you look at it, we've really stayed pretty true to some of that. And it is our guiding kind of light as we do our strategic planning. We look to that original vision and come forward with that. One of the things that we're super excited about is the children are learning to eat their harvest and what they grow. And they also are learning to share their harvest, both in a way of selling in our farm sandwich we added this year, but also in the opportunity to, when they have leftover, to take it to the food bank, to share it with local restaurants and learn kind of their entrepreneurship and what that means as well. Brooke is going to talk a little bit about some of our financials because can't do all the things we do without making sure we make some good money to support the cause of doing that.
Thanks. Our fiscal year runs from November 1st through the end of October of each year. And just this past year, we brought in $10,800 of cash income in the form of fundraisers, individual donations, contributions from businesses, and also from the United Way. One of our biggest fundraisers is the Thanksgiving pie sale fundraiser, and we raised just under $4,000 this year on that. So maybe we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But also, we had a significant contribution from the United Way that wasn't all spent at the end of the year. So we've still got some capital projects in the works now that will be happening in the coming months gearing us up for next year. We have lots of supporters, you can see from the money we brought in, but it's not just in terms of financial supporters. We also have lots of supporters of in-kind type donations. For instance, the town provides utilities, water, and trash. It's not, we try to use the rain barrels for the water to be more efficient, but we do sometimes rely on the town's water. It's nice to have that available to us, and we really appreciate that. We have received grant awards over the years from the Home Depot, Keep America Beautiful, and like I mentioned earlier, from the United Way. We get lots of contributions from the Cape Charles Rotary. We have a couple of those guys here who are also on our board. They've provided a lot of help to the garden over the years. We get help from North Hampton County 4-H with programming content, and they help us to get subject matter experts and lots of other resources. So Christina is our connection there. We get a lot of donated and discounted seeds and supplies from local businesses. And we, in 2013, volunteers, whether it was New Roots board members or master gardeners, parents logged almost 1,000 hours of volunteer time on New Roots Youth Garden activities. So just the community supports us by sending their children to the program and also by participating in our fundraising. We, the pie sale that I mentioned earlier, we raised our revenues 9% over last year. So that's something that the community is definitely supporting us in. There's some pictures in your handout of our work when we were starting the Butterfly and Herb Garden, which is what we used that America Beautiful money for. And then some roads, some folks, pictures of Rotary folks helping some children out in the garden on some of the projects that they sponsor.
We like to say it takes a village to grow a child. And we tried to show that tonight through sharing some of our supporters with us. I noticed that Amy Brandt was able to join us. She's also on our board, and she's one of the people that keeps us happy because she keeps us fed and keeps us fed with healthy things. And one of the things that our goals are is to introduce healthy eating to our children. And she can make peanut butter and celery look like the most appetizing thing in the world. It's incredible what she does with her talent. She taps into a lot of our local farmers and herb purveyors that she uses right early to support us and donate two things to us. One of the reasons we're able to do so well with our pie sales is because we are able to use local resources. And so all that effort is really going to the effort of making the pies. We do that in Amy's kitchen. So all of those things don't take off of the bottom line, which is really significant. The next kind of slide is the blessing of the worms, and I think it's probably the ones that makes most everybody's face smile when they hear about it. It's hard to believe we're celebrating the fourth annual blessing of the worms. Jim and I had literally just moved here the week before the first blessing of the worms. And I looked at him, and I said, "We've come to the right place. Anybody that blesses worms, this is a great thing." So it has been just so delightful to see that. We like to rotate the clergy that goes through, and we have people in line waiting for the next spot for next year, which is just a wonderful, wonderful thing. I think some of the pictures, if you have a chance to look at on the blessing of the worm page, is one of my favorites. Probably about midway into the cycle, we added the, we started with a fall program and just got a few beds going out there and got some things growing. And then we moved into what we call our summer garden club. And that first year, we did a two-day model, two hours at a time, and had a good support of doing it. The concept was kind of to build a club so that people, same children would come every time. And we realized as we went along that that might become a challenge in the summer because of the hours that it was and as well as just vacationing and other camps and all the other opportunities. So we've kind of refined our models over the years, and we've added, we have a spring club, a summer club, and a fall club. And the spring and fall club model was so successful. It's after school. It's from 4 to 5. And it's a kind of, it's kind of a triple crown or the triple threat, as we call it. They get in there, and they have a get fit activity. They do a learning activity. We call that big tree over there, the learning tree. So they have that learning activity under there, and then they have a garden hands-on experience. And so that 20-minute segment and rotating them, and it's able to allow us the opportunity to work with children of all ages because we can cluster those little five-year-olds together and kind of guide their learning experience throughout as well as the other age groups. And we're going to be changing our summer model this summer to match that because that's what's really worked. So we're going to be moving that to Thursdays as well and continuing like Thursdays in the garden as the regular place. And then having these events that, we haven't come up with a name yet, but we're thinking about kind of digging deep or something like that where we'll have like an intensive learning day where any organization can use, like let's say, North Hampton County Rec Department wants to bring a program in for a two-hour period for a longer learning opportunity, and we'll do different things like that. We host different events and try to help. Like the Rotary held an event for rain barrel making last year. We have the puppet theater that the town graciously moved for us that we have to be able to do some learning activities there. So people get to the garden for other reasons and learn by being there and that experience. And one way we do that is the picnic tables that are there, the three that are there that the town donated to us and built for us, and we really have appreciated that. And we're looking to, I'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later. One of the ways, last summer, I want to mention because Jen Lewis was the person who really stepped up for us last year. As we opened our business, I was not able to give the same amount of time that I'd given the summer before, and we really needed to look to someone to get us through that time period. And she was a trooper, really a trooper. And it's a lot of hot work, long work, and stuck through it. And she and Christina really pulled us through, and they helped us to evaluate where we were at and to come up with this new model for this next summer. So we really want to thank Jen for that. It was, it's a hard job, that's for sure. This past fall, we're happy to say we had 30 children on an average on Thursdays. That's pretty incredible from where we started with seven kids that first fall. So it seems like we're ranging anywhere between 12 and 30 on a regular basis, which is really, really nice. And we're hoping that the summer will follow in that same effort. We talked about the pie sales, so I'm not going to go into that, but we want to thank everybody for their support of buying those pies and certainly enjoying them. We know that that's a hardship for you to have to eat some of Amy's wonderful cooking. And we wanted to let you know about some of the kind of forward strides that we're looking to for 2014. With some of that United Way funding, we are going to be working with the town to install our own well so that we do not need that to rely upon the water of the town and some of those things. We'll still be utilizing rain barrels and all of those things that are really smart to do and to teach children to do, but we'll be working with that in the next months ahead. As I mentioned, we're adjusting our programming schedule for the summer and seeing how that works. We're very excited because we have an opportunity to get an intern partnering with the 4-H organization and some other supporters that we're hoping will help supplement. Our biggest need, like most organizations like us, is volunteers and time. And the amount of time that it takes to really run the summer program in particular is very, very time-consuming. So the intern, we're hoping, will be a good learning experience for them and an opportunity for us to have some of those people working. And we want to continue to build our partnership relationship with 4-H and the North Hampton Rec Department and other camps. We work really close with the Baptist Church Camp, with the Christian School, and just trying to make sure they see us as that avenue to do some of those things. And one of our goals this year is to really build our development opportunities and friends of New Roots Youth Garden and tap into those resources so people know that they can be involved at different levels, even if they could just volunteer for an hour one day. They don't need to make the commitment for the whole season of doing that. When I asked about preparing for this, Jen said, you know, just if you have any needs for the year, just let us know what they are. If it's something that can work out, then we'll work them out. And just one of the things that are kind of on our forefront, one, we took on the responsibility of the mowing of the grass at New Roots, and that costs us $700 to do that. If there's any way possible that that's something that the town could continue to do, that would be a big help for us to do, and we would really appreciate that. The Rotary is giving us two new picnic tables this year, and we need a third. We're trying to balance them out with six, so I know the guys from Public Works are doing that on their off time personally, but we really would love the third picnic table if possible. And then the one is really important to us because we want everyone to know how much you all support the garden. And if you look at the sign, you'll see emblems there. We have the United Way, and we have the Rotary, and we would love to add the town of Cape Charles logo seal there. So that's something that we'd love to do. And of course, we want you to mark your calendars for the blessing of the worms because that's April 27. And we really will have sunshine by then, I think. We promise, we can't promise no rain, but let's hope no snow. And want to just take an opportunity to answer any questions you might have or any comments or anything.
How much are the benches?
The benches are...
$200.
200. And the...
How much is the well?
The well is...
$3800.
$3800, which we got funding for. So we have that funded completely. So we're very proud of ourselves for that and appreciative of the United Way. So if anyone's a United Way giver, please mark New Roots Youth Garden as your contribution, and we'll greatly take that. So that's been really helpful. And that will help, you know, one of our roles, goals was to really eliminate the dependency upon, you know, we appreciate the town support in the beginning, but our goal all along has been, how can we be self-reliant? And you need boosts along the way to do that. The grass cutting was just a hardship for us last year because really, every dollar that we make, we try to put back into programming for the children in every way we can, so.
I just want to thank, I never thought it would ever take off. I said fools rush in.
The fool came, yes.
I went to the first blessing of the worms with my grandchildren. It was crazy.
Russell Bibbidge told me that day, I'll never forget. It was the first time I met him. He said, "I've blessed a lot of things in my life, Tammy, but I've never blessed a worm." And he said, "But I think this is a really good thing. I think we need to do this all." And so who did he know, you know, that we would be doing that year after year? And it always has a special, special meaning to everyone. I think we had over 100 people attend last year, which is great. Thank you, everyone. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, I forgot one thing.
Go ahead.
Seeds?
Yes, seeds. One of the things we do is harvest. The kids learn to harvest seeds to plant every year. And so I brought you guys some of those leftovers to pass around.
I'll give them out.
I don't want to.
Okay. At this time, our chief of police would like to do a presentation. I'm going to stand next to him. This is, this is really a nice thing, Jimmy. People say the understanding.
Just want to recognize three people in our community for assisting the Police Department and the town of Cape Charles in a few, two separate incidents. First, I want to thank Neil Lessard and Carol Hable. Let me tell you about this event. This event happened on January 30th of this year. I was dispatched to Kings Creek Marina where a subject had fallen off the dock and was in the water drowning. Of course, you know, January 30th, we had ice. Arrived on the scene, I observed the gentleman on the dock soaking wet, trembling with cold. Got there, due to the extreme cold weather, I decided that, you know, we need to get him off the dock, transport him in somewhere warm, get his wet clothes off of him, and take care of him there. The gentleman told me he could not walk, so we picked him up. I carried him up the ramp, put him in a golf cart, and then we transported him into the Typer Shop, Pro Shop, and got him stripped down from his wet clothes and get him warm, waiting on the ambulance to arrive. I asked him what had happened. He said, "He went and walked down, checking on his boat, slipped off the dock, fell in the water, and was unable to get back up on the dock." Thank God, Neil Lessard was walking down the dock, and I heard faint cries for help. And along with Neil and Carol Hable, they were able to pull him out of the water without question to save his life, without question. So heroes come in many forms. In this case, it was just a citizen, wasn't a police officer, firefighter, soldier, a citizen. So we want to thank, or Police Department of town, I want to thank you all, and presenting you with certificates.
We'll be shot.
She's feeling how strong she was. I can't believe you pulled him out of the water. She got him by his jerky.
Carol, turn around. Turn around, Jimmy. Turn around. Thank you so much. Mail, turn around.
Hold on. That's a man. It's not a movie camera. Stand still.
How is this gentleman? How is a gentleman?
Happy camper.
And we have one for Mike Warner, who's a town employee. I'm going to start saying, Mike, he's a tremendous asset to Cape Charles, town of Cape Charles, and has my utmost respect all the time. So this happened on January 28th of this year. He was just doing his rounds, checking, doing his morning duties, came across a female who'd been assaulted and was in distress. Mike stopped, began to render aid to her, called the police. He did this self-assail without thinking that he could possibly be in harm's way. Whoever was assaulting her came back and wanted to finish what he started. Mike stayed with her and made her feel safe till I arrived. So he put himself in harm's way if he didn't have to. So we want to present Mike. He rose to the stage. No, don't stand in a straight line. It's great.
Dear Town of Cape Charles, on January 30th, 2014, we had an incident at Kings Creek Marina that required medical attention, and our staff called 911. Cape Charles Police Department's Chief Jim Pruitt was first on scene. It was less than 30 degrees outside. Chief Pruitt sensed the urgency of the situation and the need to relocate our injured tenant. With the help of some bystanders, Chief Pruitt lifted our injured tenant up and over his shoulder and carried the gentleman up a steep ramp and then another 100 feet, so this is the real story, to a waiting golf cart. At that point, Chief Pruitt placed the patient into the cart, drove it to the pier house. Once again, Chief Pruitt carried our guest inside the warm Marina store to wait for the ambulance. All local ambulances had been dispatched elsewhere, so Chief Pruitt continued to communicate with the dispatcher on the patient's condition. Officer Greg Rippon also arrived on scene before the ambulance arrived to help in any way that he could, possibly knowing that the ambulance was going to take a while. Chief Pruitt remained very calm and stayed with the injured tenant until the ambulance arrived. Chief Pruitt took control of the logistics of getting a wide stretcher into our somewhat overcrowded store and to the patient. I truly believe that Chief Pruitt's quick and calm actions were monumental not only to our patient's comfort level, but also greatly appreciated by our staff. Thank you, Carol Hable and the Kings Creek Marina staff. Thank you. We're off to a start for a good meeting, aren't we? Very nice. Public comment. George Prudus?
I sent a follow-up letter to the mayor and the town manager late last week relative to the PSA line. Are the council persons in possession of that letter? Do you have a copy of it?
We may not have it tonight, but are you all aware of that?
Are you aware of this?
Yes.
I'm thinking maybe I'll just read it. I think that might be the best.
Go right ahead.
Yeah. Dear Mayor Sullivan, on August 19th, 2013, I sent a letter on behalf of the Business Association relative to the proposed PSA line for Route 13 to the Cape Charles wastewater treatment plant. This letter requested that the project be put on hold until certain significant questions had been answered. Subsequently, the town board met in a work session on September 25th, 2013, to discuss these questions. Specifically, the main topics of discussion were the August 19th letter itself and a financial analysis of the proposal to address specifically one of the issues the letter raised. At this time, it became clear that there was still work to be done, and the board wisely decided to require further analysis. My original letter is attached for your convenience. Since then, there have been a number of actions and events relative to the PSA line proposed, mostly at the county level. At this point, it's unclear whether this proposal will go forward or not and what the actual status of the line is. The recent proposal to change the original special tax district structure does make it appear that this is still a viable option as far as the county is concerned. At the same time, my original questions have yet to be answered after almost six months. Based on this, I have the following questions, which encompass those in my original letter with some additional ones. Number one, what is the projected financial benefit to the town from the PSA line? This would include, for example, reduction in wastewater utility rates, reduction in connection fees, et cetera. Two, are there any technical benefits to the town? For example, reduction of the smell that occurs from time to time. Three, what is the mid-to-long-term plan for wastewater treatment in the county in the immediate vicinity of Sheraton and areas north and south of 184 on Route 13? For example, as we go forward, would the plan be to connect Sheraton and additional Route 13 property to the same or via a second PSA line going into Cape Charles? Four, given the questions in item three, there are a number of possible expansion scenarios that could occur. When do we need to expand the capacity of the existing plant, and how do these scenarios affect the timing for that?
25 seconds.
More importantly, I would thank you. Would the expansion be paid for, given it would likely need to be made sooner if the existing plant supports connections out in the county? And finally, what is the current status of the PSA line plan as far as the town is concerned? Is it on hold? Has the town committed to doing this yet? And I do appreciate your attention in this matter. Look forward to your response.
And for the record, the response is forthcoming as soon as the...
I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
The next item, good evening. The next item, a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Come here.
A motion, please, for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second. No objections, so moved. Department's report.
Departments reports. The treasurer's report, action item. Good evening.
Hi. For those of you who don't know me...
Put your mic over.
I'm sorry.
Put your mic over.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jerry Murphy. I've been with the town almost three years, its town accountant. Our treasurer, Kim Coates, was unable to make the meeting this evening, so I'm going to present the report from her notes. I understand you all have the schedule here. The first section up there is the total cash on hand, and this report is as of January 31st. The total cash on hand was $1,635,757. Aside from just general operating activity, deposits and bills that we pay, which is in the shore bank checking account, our operating account, the balance of those accounts really just accrue interest, and so there's little change in those other balances there. Below that is the restricted cash balances, again, the only change is just interest that we've earned for the month of January. Kim, on the bottom of the sheet here, has tax collection comparisons, again, through January 31st, fiscal year 2014 versus 2013. I'm not going to read every category. I don't know if she does or not, but if you have any questions, or if I can do further research on any of them, I'd be glad to. Some are up, some are down, of course. On the next page, which is the schedule right here, we've got the fund balances, again, as of January 31st, of the different funds, the general public utilities, the harbor fund, the sanitation. We've got the revenues, as well as the expenses that have been expended through January 31st. Of course, there's comparable columns there where we were last year, prior year-to-date and the increases. The next schedule, which is page three, this shows the dollars we've spent on the capital projects this fiscal year. I guess probably the column, which would be the column to the extreme right-hand side, the second column in is the January actual for 2014, some of the highlighted items there. We had some expenses that got recorded, the wastewater treatment plant of $77,000. Most of this, again, it incurred in different months, but it was recorded in January. This is a carryover from last fiscal year. I'm not sure all the background on it, but another one was the Gator vehicle that was purchased in the harbor fund there of $12,000. That's a new item that's listed. And below that would be the offshore breakwater, I think it's on here, called Marina Inshore Floating Slips, of $7,500. And the final page shows us year-to-date collections for real estate tax collections, as well as personal property tax collections. You can see that as far as real estate tax collections, we've collected 85% of the total bill for the year, and on personal property tax, we've collected 75%. The last seven numbers at the bottom, as you know, we started accepting credit card payments in the town, we have since November of 2012. It represents all the revenue that we've collected. This is not official payments, but this is MasterCard, Discover, Visa. We've collected, what, $211,000, almost $212,000 of revenue, just through our credit card You have any questions?
Jerry, nice to turn this job.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Easy, so have a good night. Okay, I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Second. Hearing no objections, the treasurer's report is moved by unanimous consent. Planning commission and boards?
I have a couple of updates from what was included in the packet. The historic district review board met Tuesday night. They revisited a prior application for 621 Jefferson regarding a chimney, and the application was unanimously approved to allow them to not replace the chimney. A JPA application for the Army Corps of Engineers project for the harbor dredging has been received, so I'll be contacting the weapons board to get a hearing scheduled for that. And then just a quick update on the flood insurance rate maps from FEMA. I spoke with Charlie Banks from DCR a couple of days ago. As of right now, their schedule is saying that the final letter of determination will go out on May 5th. From that point, we'll have six months to get our flood plain ordinance up to date and amended, and then the new flood insurance rate maps will go into effect November 5th of this year.
Does anybody have anything for the other department staff, department heads? I meant. Yes, you did?
Yeah.
You look like you did.
Just to give you all an update, it's in my report as well, but the Cape Charles loft project at the old high school has been reviewed by myself and Rob. We had several comments to go back to the architects. They've resubmitted, and I've had to go back to them again with some additional comments. So I feel like we're pretty close to getting a plan reviewed down, I mean, a set of plans that will be final for them to be able to permit for construction within the next probably And the plans are in my office. If any council would like to come by, I'd be glad to sit down with you, let you look them over, or if you have any questions. I've already had one come by, so.
Thank you. There is no old business, I think that's a first, so we're going to go right into new business. Planning Commission 2013 Annual Record.
All right, Virginia State Code 15.2-2221.5 states that, under the duties of commissions, the local planning commission shall make recommendations and an annual report to the governing body concerning the operation of the commission and the status of planning within its jurisdiction. Based on that, it was a month, two months ago, I prepared the attached report for the planning commission. They reviewed it and approved, they had a couple of minor changes, which is incorporated into this, the final, and it's in front of you. It basically just gives a rundown of the different projects the planning commission oversaw during 2013, whether it's rezonings, conditional use permits, zoning ordinance amendments. And it also kind of runs down just applications that the planning department had in front of them that not necessarily went to the planning commission, zoning violations, zoning clearances, home occupation applications. The planning commission staff is presenting this to you today.
The next item being is an action item, compensation and classification study. As you know, Heather's not here this evening, so I shall go over this, and council can vote if they choose. The town of Cape Charles has not updated the employee wage scale in a number of years. Most localities obtain a professional compensation and classification study every so often, but there's no record of the town having done so. During the budget discussions for fiscal year 2013 and 14, town council expressed their desire for a professional study, and a proposal was obtained from Springstead Incorporated, who had previously worked with a number of localities in the Commonwealth of Virginia, including Acnamac County. Due to the lack of funding, the project was deferred. At the February 8th, 2014 council retreat, the study was revisited, and the majority of council were in favor of obtaining a professional study as soon as possible. The compensation and classification study would evaluate the efficiencies and deficiencies of each department and help determining staffing needs. A cost estimate of $10,300 has been confirmed. The scope of work and cost estimate remain unchanged from the original proposal, which was received in March 2013. A portion of the savings from the comprehensive plan update could be allocated for the study. The recommendation from staff is that council authorizes the town manager to, that town staff authorizes the town manager to execute the agreement with Springstead Incorporated to proceed with the compensation and classification study as presented, and I would need a motion.
I make a motion, read. Does the county do the study for us?
Authorize the town manager, okay? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved by unanimous consent. The next item, local government challenge grant art center. The town of Cape Charles has participated in the Virginia Commission for the Arts Local Government Challenge Grant since 1997. The commission matches local government funds up to $5,000. In fiscal year 2013-14, the town allocated $2,500 as the local map. The town provided $5,000 for fiscal year 2009-10 through 2012-13. The grant application deadline is April 1st of this year. The grant application is typically drafted by art center and signed by town staff. The town must confirm in writing to the commission of the councils decision to appropriate the matching funds by July 1st, 2014. The local map in the amount of $5,000 is included in the draft fiscal year 2014-15 budget, and the amount will be reviewed by council at a future budget work session. Submission of the application for $5,000 does not bind the town to that amount. Council may opt to reduce the amount to $2,500 during the budget discussion. The recommendation from staff is approval to submit the local government challenge grant application by the April 1st, 2014 deadline as discussed. This is an action item.
All hinging on the budget.
It says, you may opt, yes. So we need a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved by unanimous consent. The next item, also action item, local grinder for Mason Avenue Pump Station. I will be dayfather. On December 3rd, 2013, a capital projects priority list was established. On December 5th, 2013, town council approved financing of capital projects using the funds from the 2013 B financing. At the February 8th work session, the town council again discussed and reviewed the capital projects priority list. Discussion, the number two priority project is installing the communitar grinder, Mason Avenue Pump Station, as part of the Mason Avenue Pump Station upgrades. The old communicate, help me.
Grinder.
Grinder was removed due to budget restraints with the intent to replace at a later time. The grinder rags, handy wipes, and other debris's... No, just a second, give me a minute. The grinder grinds. The grinder grinds, wow. The grinder grinds, rather than the rags, handy wipes, and other debris before it enters the wet wall. The existing bar screen, which is clearly clean daily, captures 60 to 80% of the debris. The grinder will eliminate close to 100% of the debris and rarely requires maintenance. Without the grinder, the rags and the other debris are pulled into the foliage where they remain, decreasing the efficiency of the pump, or in some cases, clogging or stopping the pump completely. Staff would like to have a new grinder installed prior to the increase of flow that we experience in the spring and summer seasons. The proposal from JWC Environmental is for $42,701. The work would be completed in-house, but electrical work is needed and is estimated to be $7,000. The total project cost will be within the $50,000 amount included in the fiscal year 13-14 budget. Staff requests approval to finance the purchase and installation of the grinder through the 2013 B financing as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. I'm still trying to pronounce that word.
Does most people know that the wet naps are really messing up sewer systems all over the country? Bad. Little wet naps, the handy wipes.
The handy wipes.
Crossing millions and millions of dollars because they have nothing down that can filter them out. It's not ever stunned by a hand.
Hence, the grinder. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no objections, so moved by unanimous consent. What time is it?
4:40.
Wow. All right, let me just slow this down. This time, we will have mayor and council comments, five minutes. I don't have any.
I don't have any. I have one. I think that perhaps we did the right thing in selecting a new chief. Not just because he goes out and takes people on his shoulders and can't... I sort of think he's a good, uh, good chief.
Are you up for reelection? Any other comments? Chris, nothing? John?
No.
Mike?
I did the wet nap.
The wet nap, he's already had his comment. Okay, our announcements. Tell me if I've missed anything, feel free to add it. March 6th is the work session, 6:00 p.m. Town Hall, March 13th is the town council budget work session, 6:00 p.m. Town Hall. March 20th, town council regular meeting, 6:00 p.m. Right here. And we have the February 27th budget work session. At 3:05, yes.
Sorry, 27th, 3:00.
Anything else?
I moved it adjourned.
Oh, no, just, I got one more thing.
We have something, yes, sir.
I just want, you know, I don't want to interrupt you, but we did a voting safety class coming on, it's going to be held in Cape Charles, starting March 1st. If anybody needs information, they can call me.
I'll go, as I look out over the room, we're all getting to the final stages of our life, some more than the others. Riverside General is having a heart seminar at Little Italy on Monday.
Little Italy?
Little Italy. Dr. Pascal is running it with another doctor, there's going to be all types of tests being done on you, it's $10, and just call the cardiac rehab center at the hospital, put your name in. It's a good thing, I'm going to go. I'm old.
All right, Eddie, if there are no other comments, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no objections. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much.